Good evening. Now, welcome everyone. It's Monday, January 27th, 2025. It's time for our regularly scheduled city council meeting. Ask the clerk to certify the meeting notice.
This meeting has been noticed in accordance with Idaho Code 74-204.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Jacobs. Looks like you're still muted, Councilmember Jacob. There you go.
Here.
Okay.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Here.
Councilmember Page?
Here.
Councilmember Rasmussen?
Here.
Thank you. Next item is the pledge of allegiance. If you join me. Changes to the agenda? Anybody? Don't see any. We move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the consent agenda as written. Second.
Got a motion as second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none of the clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Rasmussen?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move now to special business item one, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers GI Flood Study Update. Council, we've been at this for... And we're approaching a milestone that I believe it's time for the council to kind of get brought up to date, brought up to speed. So we have our city engineer here and our primary hydrological contractor, water guy, Nick is here. And Jenna will do an introduction and then we'll get that briefing.
Mayor members of the council, thank you. As always, the mayor does a great introduction and I don't have much more to add. The city has specifically been looking at the flood study with some vigor over the last eight years. And over the last couple of years, the city's been undergoing what is referred to as the Army Corps GI or General Investigation Study for Flood Hazard Risk Management. This is a congressionally authorized study through the local, or through congressionally authorized. But the local Walla Walla office is the branch of the Army Corps that has been administering the project. It's gotten, the study has gotten to the point where a tentatively selected plan is ready to be selected. And then that will be done prior to having the study be sent out for peer review more at national level. In a nutshell, if the Army Corps were here, they probably go, there's a lot of nuances that I missed there. But tonight, I get to introduce city engineer Joe Canning, which I don't know that all of you know him as well as an engineer Nick Kraus with QRS Consulting. Joe Canning with Centurion Engineers is the city engineer as noted. And he has been providing engineering for the city on both the private and public side since 1976. And he humbly asks that I'm not seeing his accolades too much and that he has quite the list of accomplishments and expertise. But on this slide, there's a few of some of his accolades in his professional engineering career. And Nick Kraus also brings with him quite a bit of expertise. He has been with QRS since 1998 and a principal for the last 20 years. And QRS has done quite a bit of hydrologic engineering work on the Boise River, both himself as well as his firm. And with that, I'll turn it over to the engineers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jenna. Mayor members of the council. My name is Joe Canning and Jenna did introduce me. So I've been with Garden City for quite a while as a consultant. We certainly appreciate that work and this flood issue's been around a while. And we're finally getting to the point where I think we have some answers, or at least some questions. And we can go from there. But I think what we're going to try to do tonight is we're gonna, I'm just gonna talk briefly and I'll bring Nick up. Nick has all the main part of the presentation. But really, we're trying to answer several questions. And I think those questions are, what is the issue with the floodplain? How might we address it? How much might it cost? How could it be paid for? Why do it? Where do we go from here? And what is the next step? Same type of thing. I'm just going to talk a little bit briefly about one of those questions is why do it? And really, it's for two reasons. It's to reduce the flood risk to the citizens of the city. And then reduce potential flood insurance premiums that the citizens of the city would have to possibly pay. So there's ways to mitigate to both of those, the flood risk and flood insurance premiums by carrying forward doing some improvements to help the city go. But my main part I'm going to talk about tonight's a little bit of history. This has been around a while. And the prior set of FEMA flood maps that controlled development in the city were dated in 2003. So FEMA initiated a new flood study for the Boise River that basically started producing results in 2016. And the study was performed by the Army Corps of Engineers. And there were updated draft flood maps that were dated in that 2016 period. So this was a draft set. They were not adopted at the time. The draft maps indicated a much higher flood risk to Garden City than the 2003 version. It was significantly different, much, much higher in flood risk. And those flood risk differences were BFE-based flood elevations through the city were basically anywhere from one to perhaps three feet higher than the 2003 maps. So that is a significant elevation increase from the prior maps. And the overall result was a very high percentage of the city came into what would be the 100-year floodplain. The 2003 maps, it was a much smaller part of the city. With the proposed work maps, it increased to almost all the city. It made a huge difference in the amount that was included. And due to the enormous impact, potential enormous impact to the city residents, the city requested to be held in seclusion by FEMA. And it's a little bit of an odd situation. It's where because of the huge impact the new maps would have created for the city, FEMA let us select seclusion, which means they wouldn't create the new maps based on that 2016 flood study. So the boundaries of Garden City are currently under the 2003 maps because we're in seclusion. And part of that working process is that as long as we're in seclusion, as long as the city's working toward reducing the flood risk, then FEMA won't come back and change the flood maps. So you'll kind of find an odd boundary issues. If you look at the flood maps through Boise and all of a sudden you hit Garden City, the flood elevations drop. And then as you go through Garden City, they stay where they were in 2003. And then down by Eagle Island, as you leave the city, all of a sudden they'll just pop back up. And that's because we're in the, we're under the 2003 maps. The rest of the counties on the 2020 maps, which showed the increased flood elevations. So anyway, like I mentioned, so if the city decides to do nothing, then sooner or later, we will be put into a much higher BFE. The BFEs will come up. There will be more impact to the citizens and the land in Garden City. So to move ahead from that, the city did enter into an agreement with the Corps of Engineers under a general investigation study. That's been going on for several years now. And the idea being is what can be done to lower the flood risk to the city? And I started with seven questions just a little bit ago. And we hope to answer some of those tonight. I'm not sure we're going to get to all of them. We're going to try to answer some. But we're also respectful of your time, so we may not be able to answer all of them. We could go up here and sit up here and talk for several hours on this and we don't want to do that. So as a partner with the city during the investigation, the Corps' investigation, the city engaged a consultant that has valuable and extensive experience with floodplain management. And so I'm very pleased to introduce Nick to bring him up. And Nick is with QRS Consulting. Thank you.
Here, I had to run this thing. Mayor Evans, members of the council, appreciate the opportunity to be here. Joe did a really good, Jenna did a really good job of kind of the intro part of this, kind of laying things out. So now I guess I'm going to kind of endeavor to distill two years and lots of dollars of effort by the Corps of Engineers and the effort that Joe and I and Jenna and Colin have put into discussions on this, kind of distill that into maybe 20 or 30 minutes. So if I'm kind of moving along and I gloss over something, feel free to ask questions. If anything comes up, I don't mind being interrupted during this thing. Just try to get the process that we've gone through to a point that, you know, just kind of breaks it down into pieces. So you all can kind of see where the process is now, is part of your decision making, moving forward. But kind of skip over this. Joe already really covered the background. What has come out of this general investigation study so far is really two work products. A hydraulic model, a two-dimensional hydraulic model of the Boise River from the Main Street Bridge at the upper city limits line down to Eagle Island at the downstream end of Garden City. And then from that, the Corps started working on what they call a draft integrated feasibility report, which takes those modeling results and they use that to then create a work plan with options for moving ahead. And so the first thing I was going to really talk about is this new hydraulic model. So Joe had mentioned the 2003 flood study. And then there was the 2016 draft flood study. Both of those are one-dimensional model efforts with a lot of generalized assumptions in them. So a lot of what the Corps has done is they've developed this new hydraulic model based on 2019 LiDAR data for the valley, updated bathymetry. And it's really, it's the best model I've seen of the Boise River. It's very detailed. They've spent a lot of time on it. And the gentleman I have working on it, Mark Morris, I'll give a shout out to him with the Corps. He's excellent hydraulic model. He's done a fantastic job putting this model together. And this model then is the most realistic, you know, model approach to Boise River flood risk that's been created to date. And it's kind of been the basis of everything going forward in this, in this general investigation. This is actually output from that model. This is actually a combination of output. It's a lot going on on this, but let's see if this pointer works. The combination of the yellow and the blue are the 2016 draft flood maps. So if Garden City would not have went into seclusion after the 2016 maps came out, the yellow areas would have been the areas that would have been in the 100-year floodplain. So like southwest Garden City, you see some of this stuff that goes up over Chindon Boulevard. Over on the right side, we've got a bunch of Boise City stuff. But based on what I've seen, about 73% of the city would have been in the 100-year floodplain. What's shown in blue here is actually the Corps' newest two-dimensional modeling effort, which is more accurate in my opinion. And it's a less conservative approach, but you know, it's a better rendition of what actual flood risk in the valley around Garden City would look like. And kind of going forward, this is just a blown up view of the upper end of that model. So kind of on the down the bottom of the page, you've got the Main Street Bridge, Veterans Parkway. Kind of the blue ribbon in the middle is the river itself. And then this, the 2016 model is showing large areas of the yellow. This would all have been floodplain where the yellow and blue is showing. But kind of in southwest Garden City, the 2D model is showing a lot of flow. You can see it. It's kind of a checkerboard pattern. So with the two-dimensional model, the newest effort showing is there's there's just a lot of street flooding and not necessarily overall property flooding, where the 2016 model would have showed significant property flooding. So this next slide is actually veterans down to Glenwood. So kind of similar, you've got the River Club property on the north of the river, just above Glenwood. 2016 effort showed that all inundated where the newest core efforts, more realistic efforts just show a smattering of blue in that area, large areas of that really are not at flood risk. So the differentiation between the 2016 kind of lower effort modeling versus the latest core model. Looks like I got a reboot now here. And then one more slide, same model, just the downstream end of the city. The red line is approximation of city limits. So Yata County and the city of Eagle up in this area, the same thing along Riverside Drive. 2016 effort was showing inundation for large areas, you know, between Riverside Drive and State Street. The Corps' newest model shows more just localized flooding. So this model then was used as we've been moving through this process with the Corps. It was used to get into this draft integrated feasibility report where the Corps in conjunction with feedback that we've been giving, you know, Corps staff along with Joe and city staff, they've been developing alternatives to deal with flood risk based off of their newest modeling results. And that process, it's fairly heavily constrained by federal regulations. But really, the basis behind it is this newest hydraulic model. And so I think the you know, the feasibility report is based on the, you know, the newest available, best available information that's out there as far as flood risk in Garden City. And so as a part of that flood risk, how do we mitigate for it? And so the Corps' program is partially, you know, the structural stuff, the levees, concrete flood walls, and I'll show examples of these here in a minute. Sheet pile, which is, you know, very similar to the concrete flood wall, but with steel. And one of the other things that we had put forward too was could we do any existing infrastructure modifications, actually make changes in the floodplain? So we're not building flood walls everywhere. And then another opportunity for reducing flood risk would be temporary measures along the Boise River. So stuff you would put in place during a flood event, not beforehand. And so just a quick overview of what these would look like. So Corps of Engineers has a standard levy detail. This is what a levy looks like if you're in the Corps of Engineers world. Couple of the big takeaways. The levy itself, which would be the green belt. You have a 10-foot green belt on top of it, but there's a 15-foot right-of-way need on the private property or the off-riverside for maintenance access. And then on the riverside of a Corps levy, you'll notice there's not a lot of trees, not a lot of vegetation. The requirement of a certified Corps levy, something that'll get through FEMA, there's no vegetation between that levy and really the river unless you have enough setback. So a standard levy width in our situation is 80 feet from kind of that edge of that 15-foot easement to wherever it ends, wherever it toes out at the Boise River, where there could be no vegetation. You'd have a riprap side on the riverside and then a 15-foot easement, you know, through access on the upland side. So a levy, fairly substantial impact along the river. So other options that we were really looking at, and this is fairly significant impacts. Another option is a concrete flood wall. Similar in a lot of cases to the levy, but it can be narrowed up because the flood wall sits on the riverside of the existing green belt. And then you can use the green belt for the access for maintenance and any kind of flood, flood issues. And then, but again, on the riverside, it's pretty, pretty impactful, the existing vegetation. It does narrow that overall width up to just under 58, or about 58 feet where there wouldn't be any vegetation. So again, there's still a decent amount of impact along the river, depending upon where this is set horizontally along the green belt. And so then one other option that kind of reduces things even more is a sheet pile option. So you drive steel pile into the ground. It's all interlocking. And then you can put kind of a decorative concrete cap or something on top of it. So you don't have to expose steel. And that's what this is depicting right here. And that sheet pile option is on the landward side of the green belt. And it allows a lot more opportunity to then to keep vegetation on the riverside of the green belt. So there's just one more option and kind of the Corps' suite of methods for structural flood protection. But again, you got a 15-foot easement on the property side. Or in some cases, you know, there are public streets, but on the non-riverside, there's a 15-foot access easement all the way along this kind of, this kind of structure.
So Nick, there's probably a a good explanation, but maybe why can't the sheet pile be on the riverside of the green belt?
I think it could be moved over there. The, by putting it on the offside, we're able to protect more vegetation because we got to stay 15 feet off of any structure with vegetation. So if we put it on the riverside, then we're taking more vegetation out down toward the river. So I don't think they wanted vegetation to grow right up against any structural alternative.
Okay.
So this allows for that setback. And honestly, if we go back a slide, this flood wall could likely be moved over as well to the other side. And I know we had looked at possibly crossing the green belt in certain areas where it made the most sense and have it on one side or the other. But since like this concrete flood wall, it does not have a deep foundation. There's an insistence on just rip wrapping the entire river slope to protect it from undermining. But when we look at the sheet pile, the sheet pile goes in below the scour depth in the river. So it does give some more flexibility on where it can sit. We don't have to take out all the trees along the riverside. So those are kind of the three primary, you know, significant structural solutions for flood mitigation. It's, you know, it's the very engineered approach to flood mitigation. Let's build a wall, we'll keep it from flooding. And a couple of other things that we were looking at with the Corps and kind of pushed them to take a look at, this is actually a zoomed-in excerpt from their flood model. And actually, all the little numbers all over it, they actually show flood depths at the 100-year flood event. This, this is an excerpt without any structural improvements in place. But one of the things we did talk to the Corps about was right now, there's a lot of flooding that gets out into the fairgrounds and it actually runs across Glenwood right at Marigold. And so Joe and I were looking at some options. What do we kind of redo this intersection? We can get floodwater to flow around City Hall here. And down River Point Drive and back into the river. What does that do upstream? And so this is one of these making off-channel improvements where maybe we don't have to build a flood wall everywhere. And the Corps did look at this. It actually works out pretty well between, you know, just changing this intersection, routing water down around City Hall back into the river in conjunction with a larger green belt bridge. So these were just looking at options that are not built on a levy or anything like that, in which this, this was one option that helped quite a bit in this part of town. So it's just kind of an example of a it's a structural component, but it's changing things off-channel and not building levees or flood walls. And so this is included in some of the alternatives that we'll look at here in a minute for flood risk mitigation. And then kind of the final solution or another option, instead of building anything, flooding can be handled with, you know, portable measures, water dams, the HESCO barriers. These were put in at the 2017 there at the Sun Rock Pit down at the lower end of the city when it was flooding. So these are bags filled full of sand or gravel. And then you put them in, when the water's coming up, you take them out afterward. They can be very effective. The one thing to note with these though, these do not change the flood maps, you know, because they are a temporary measure. You can theoretically protect the citizens of Garden City better than today. But it does not change the flood maps and people in the floodplain, it will still show the same risk to them as if nothing, nothing is done project-wise. So that being said, the Corps developed five alternatives to really address you know, flood risk in the city. And it starts out kind of the most bulletproof option. And then we just kind of scale down as we move through it. And so you know, the first option, they call it the structural alternative. We build levees and flood walls up and down the river and we eliminate, we basically eliminate flood risk to Garden City. It's kind of expensive. You can see the pricing there. It's, you know, about $170 million. And then Garden City's cost share on a project like that is 35, 65. So there's about 58 and a half million dollars. And this is, this is belt and suspenders. It's not going to flood anymore. And there's another piece to that too. The Corps does not cost share in like easement acquisition, land acquisition. And they've estimated maybe another $10 million in those numbers that they don't cost share in. So I, I'm just going to kind of leave this one alone because I think it's the least likely approach. So I don't even have any mapping of what this would look like. Because basically you just, you channelize the river. And that's the most robust option. From a Corps' perspective, they're going to look at a suite of options. So this is kind of that high-end money's not an option, or you know, not an issue kind of approach. But then as we started working with the Corps, we started looking at, you know, what if we do this? What if we do this other thing? Can we pare this back to something that makes reasonable sense, but still accomplishes the goals of, you know, reducing flood risk? And so the second option, there's really two sub-options. It's the light structural alternative. It still has a lot of levy and flood wall in it. But it reduces the overall length of flood wall by making those changes. I was pointing out at Glenwood and Marigold to try to do some flood routing instead of just complete flood elimination. And so by doing that, it takes that cost down substantially. You know, we're in that $75 million range with a Garden City share, you know, local share in that, you know, 25 million plus. And then depending upon which option, which version we look at, there's some other, you know, land acquisition costs and stuff like that. So it's still not inexpensive. You know, it's $100 million less than the initial option. And it looks like this. This is the Boise River, you know, the blue line in the middle. And what we're looking at is actually topography for the city. It's got the aerial photo lifted off of it. So Glenwood in this area, north-south, this little black lines, they're the work at Marigold and Glenwood. And then these lines, there's little short pieces. This is a core exhibit, but that parallel the river in certain places. Those are levy sections. And there's nine total sections. And then we've got the roadway modifications at Glenwood and then also the green belt tunnel improvements. And the levees could either be flood walls or actual levees, or there's varying And the levies could either be flood walls or actual levies, or you know, there's 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 varying options there. But based on the modeling, kind of picking off those areas where we do have flooding coming from the river out into the floodplain. And so it looks like this with that that option in place. Where if you take. The green plus the blue up there is the course recent model. So that's what flooding looks like. Is I think that's a realistic picture of what flooding would look like in the hundred year event is the green plus the blue. If we implement the light structural alternative, we end up with the green. And so all these areas that are just showing blue only would no longer be at flood risk. And then we get down this large green area here. That's actually the sun rock pit. So these Garden City limits is over in here. So this is outside of Garden City. This area over here, that's city of Boise. So largely, oh, and we got the fairgrounds just above Glenwood. Largely this alternative. It removes a very large percentage of the city from flood risk um through implementation. Um, there's pretty good price tags still attached to that. So. Core came back with what they call the ultra light structural alternative. This one.
I apologize. So on the light structural. Can you give me a a percentage of what that reduction is?
Didn't do the math on it, but it's less than half. It reduces it by more than half. We have not had access to the underlying data, so we haven't really been able to analyze it. We've just, you know, had lots of calls and conversations with the core, but. We've not been able to run analysis on any of it, but it it's very significant um portion of the city comes out.
Thank you.
So yeah, back to the ultra light structural alternative. It looks a lot like the light structural. The big difference is it substitutes some of the flood walls with temporary measures. So like HESCO barriers or. You know, depending on the depth, it could be sandbagging, i- you know, something that the city, the city would have to have an emergency action plan in place. And should then, you know, the Bureau of Reclamation, the Corps say that's gonna flood. The city then would go out and start implementing these measures in select areas. So there's not so many permanent. There's not so much permanent installation of flood wall or levy. Again, it drops the cost. Um I think from that, you know, mid seventy million dollar range, you know, the core is estimating down to the fifty million dollar range. With a eighteen million dollar local cost estimate. The big thing though, to the big takeaway from this, this does not change the flood maps this. In fact, you know, would reduce flood risk for taxpayers, but only if. Public Works, city staff got out there in time before a flood occurred. Had these measures stockpiled in place, implemented an emergency action plan. And and had that functional before we hit a one hundred year event. So. Positive side of it, it's it is less money than, you know, s- structural emplacements. But it does not change the flood maps. Um so just, you know, considerations.
So to be clear. If it's not changing the flood maps, then um I'm interpreting that to mean that the insurance. Providers wouldn't see, would not see any difference and still consider risk, correct?
That is correct. Yeah, and flood insurance costs would not change.
Thank you.
I've had experience with that in Boise City where. You know, they they there's some stuff over before Boise Reserve that's kind of flood protection and. FEMA does not consider that as being sufficient to change flood risk.
I appreciate that and I'm gonna shift gears a little bit. So so the emergency action plan wouldn't necessarily mean that it's actions. Being taken during an event, but that we have everything prepped. And and assumes that we would have time to respond. Visi- the team would get sandbags out and run out there and drop them where they need to be. If we had a sudden downpour and flooding. There's a potential that that we wouldn't have time to respond. Is that fair?
I think that's a fair assessment. Um to some degree, the the hundred year event is likely a snow melt. Reservoirs of, you know, are full and the Corps of Engineers has to go into flood flood releases. Um a rainfall event of significant magnitude is likely. Not going to be a dur- sufficient duration to create this level of flooding. It'd probably be more localized. Unless we start getting into the probable maximum flood kind of situations, which if that happens, we've got more worries.
Nick, why don't you uh just for some perspective, in case somebody doesn't know. Uh, the one hundred year event has a specific flow estimate. Uh out of the dam at Glenwood, I mean. And it's sixteen thousand, whatever it is.
Yeah, sixteen thousand six hundred CFS. And in the summer, I mean. Boise River base flows like for twelve hundred. CFS. When we've had high water, say twenty seventeen, you know, that was like ninety eight hundred CFS at Glenwood. And which, you know, the core tries very hard to keep it below ten thousand on the river. Because of once it starts getting over ten thousand, that's where we tend to go from nuisance flooding to. Their, you know, real property damage would start to occur in Garden City currently above ten thousand. And so. But also to put in perspective, I think it was eighty three. I wasn't around here. Joe probably remembers it.
Joe and I were still middle aged in eighty three. That's how we remember, huh, Joe?
But nineteen eighty three. Boise River natural flows hit somewhere on the order of twenty five thousand CFS and the river, the reservoirs were nearly full. And the core came very close to releasing twenty five thousand CFS, like within a couple of days. The historical record of releasing twenty five thousand through Boise and Garden City. Nineteen eighty three, that would have been really obnoxious. Two thousand and twenty five, that'd be a disaster. Um with all of the developments occurred. Um and that's the challenge with these. I've never written an emergency action plan for an entire city. Actually worked with Jenna not too long ago on a developer that had some issues and. They're um. They're they're they're, I I think they'd be difficult to, you know, to keep up and enforce in a lot of ways. And technically, and I don't know what FEMA would say about a citywide one, but my expectation is yes, you'd have to have this. This stage, you'd have to assignments made with city staff. Thou shalt do this when. You know, the Glenwood gauge hits some number and have it in place. And it could even be that you put it in place and then, well, if this. River backs off a little bit and then you pull it back out. And then most of this stuff would be a one time use situation, you know, put a lot of HESCO. Um barriers out there and stuff. They're all just gonna go on a, you know, gravel pit or something, probably when you're done, you're not gonna reuse it. So that's the something to think about, like this fifty million dollar price tag. The, those temporary measures are not in this price. You know, this is. All the planning and design of where we do have permanent measures. I mean, the temporary stuff, that would be a, you know, a Garden City. Into perpetuity operations situation. And like you said, I have not seen that on a citywide basis. I've just seen it for like an individual property um kind of situation where this would have to go through FEMA, be vetted. Not real sure how that would look. I I think it would be possible. I guess not sure how it would look.
So even even if uh the temporary barriers, as you said, if we indicators. Our emergency response, we deploy it all. Even if floodwaters never touch them, when they're removed, they they're considered disposable. They would not be reusable.
Yeah, because those barriers, they're, they just kind of fold out. There's something the army invented for making. You know, use them in Afghanistan to set up. You know, forward firing bases and stuff, because they just kind of fold out. They're just like wire covered with fabric. Filling full of gravel, so there's no real practical way to get the gravel back out without destroying. The the inflatable dam. Or while they're actually water filled, those could be potentially reused again. But they usually only work in fairly shallow flooding and then in deeper flooding areas, you'd have to use something, you know. More substantial like a HESCO barrier or. Large sandbags or wouldn't necessarily have to be high tech. You just have to have a good plan to get it out there and, you know, how does it all work and. Piece of it would probably be, how fast can you place it? You know, what's the likelihood that the river comes up? You know, this fast and we need a week to get it all installed or if you don't get it all installed. You don't do any good. So there are definitely some challenges, I would think. On, you know, kind of a temporary application. And then, yeah, you would start over again. You'd pull it all out. You'd have to restock. You know, your your supplies, you probably modify your emergency action plan. And I believe there's a requirement. You know, you you have to kind of role play this too. You have to kind of go through this and make sure it all works every few years. Make sure you're training staff. Um because people need to know how to put it in. So staff turnover, you'd have to keep on top of it.
And as far as storage, how much space do that or maybe Colin knows this? Like, how much space would it require?
That's a good question. I mean, those HESCO barriers, they fold down pretty flat. I mean, but. Probably take a lot of room in your shop, Colin. Um and then you'd be buying the gravel from whatever gravel supplier. You know, to fill.
An area in the city with a lot of sand anyway. I appreciate your.
Appreciate the questions. So ultra light structural, this is actually this pretty much the same map. As the one I showed. It it really doesn't change anything. It's kind of got barriers in the same place, but the red ones, it's a little hard to see the colors. The red ones would actually become temporary barriers. So there's one up here at the top. Pointer doesn't work real well on that screen. Um up here at the top that um that is uh the River Club. And so that's showing a a temporary barrier along there, um the flood depths or stuff that would work out fairly well. Where over on the left side, there's a black line. That is along the Marigold, just just downstream from where we're at now. That's showing a permanent barrier. And. As the core was looking at this, and he was kind of a combination of flood depths and risks, you know, permanent barriers, which is temporary. And so that kind of gets us through that one. And then. This is pretty close to the same flood risk map as the the previous one as well. Showing green plus blue as being everything that would flood. And then the green is the reduced blood impact, assuming you get everything in place. All the temporary barriers in place. So it doesn't change a whole lot. It's just the barriers go from permanent to temporary in in certain areas. And then again. The way anybody live in any of these blue areas under the light structural alternative, they would no longer be in the floodplain. Under the ultra light alternative, everything that you see is blue, all of that ground would still be in the hundred year floodplain. That makes sense? And then this is a newest one that the core came back with just a week or so ago. So we've been just talking about, you know, there's a lot of money in these other ones. They're calling this is the most damages alternative. And what we'd asked them to kind of look at, so. You know, based on the previous map, we think a lot of this area. Where flooding is kind of spread out and scattered, it's 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 likely it's lower velocity. It's low depth flooding, it's city streets. And so we kind of, we asked them, just look at them, the areas where we've got a lot of flow, like. Where we got almost a channel coming out just below vets. Um, you know, where we got a lot of blue, basically that's homogenous. So those are areas, and we haven't really been able to inspect the model up close, where the depths are more than a couple of feet or even more than a foot. And velocities are a little higher, so. These are areas that are really at higher risk, where you're more likely to have dangerous flooding. Buildings get inundated to, you know, any kind of depth. And so they called it the most damages alternative. But it would just put flood walls into areas where there's like channelized water flowing out of the Boise River. Versus kind of wide shallow sheet flow. And it drops the price yet again, you know, I think the cost share for Garden City on the light structure is about eighteen million. This one's about fourteen and a half. The benefit to this one, you know, there's no temporary barriers. It just protects less people. So those people would be moved out out of the, removed from the floodplain. The core came out with this alternative. Recently enough, we don't have any modeling to reflect what this would look like. But we got this map from them. And the black lines here and here and here. They're all kind of up in that midtown kind of area, just above the fairgrounds. Up in here, the number three and the number six, um is just below Veterans Memorial Parkway. And then up nine is up near uh just downstream Riverside uh Hotel. And um these are three of the worst areas on Garden City where there's significant flow coming from the channel out into the city proper. So this just shows three levy segments, reduces the cost yet again. But, you you know, we don't address any flooding on the north side of the river or anything below Glenwood. So these were just the highest risk, greatest depth areas. Um so it's kind of that selective. You know, attempt to, who stands? You know, who has the most risk of getting of getting flooded and significantly flooded um with significant property damage? And um but again, the model was produced recent, or the. This effort, the cost effort was produced recently. Now, we don't have any modeling to show really how it affects things. But. This is, I would expect is probably the least cost alternative that will come out of this. Process, this general investigation and the way the core approaches it, you know, with. With with respect to both flood risk and their process and, you know, how they do things um through that process. So um.
And I may have missed it, so I apologize. But again, with this most damages alternative, this would not change the flood map.
This would, sorry, this would change the flood maps. For those people that were protected, you know, those areas that were protected by these three levy or flood wall segments. The north side of the river was really left out, because a lot of the flooding that we saw down in the River Club area or even downstream of Glenwood. Actually comes out of the river um in Boise City Limits. And and then just kind of works, it's, there's a lot of flooding on the north side. It kind of comes in and out of the river, but. Um to do any work, a lot, any significant flood protection in the upper river on the right bank, it's actually in Boise City Limits. So this one stays away from any Boise City property when it's looking at that. But it would remove some people from the floodway or floodplain. We just haven't seen how many. Because they have, there's no modeling to go along with this this latest alternative that we've seen. That's kind of where we're at. I mean, that's a lot. Hopefully it was generally clear. On kind of what's going on. And my understanding of the next steps, Joe alluded to this. You know, the core is really looking to where do they go from here? You know, they're they're kind of looking for the city to select an option and move forward with it. Um, there's always the do nothing alternative. And that actually do nothing could look like several different things. It could literally be do nothing and you just call up FEMA and say, hey, we're gonna. We're gonna accept the twenty sixteen flood maps and be done with it. Or do nothing could look like a city. You know, project of some kind or a city analysis. Um I think at this point, it's more um get you guys up to speed as to what's going on and then. Start thinking about these options, what this course study has came up with, is they um. They're kind of late in this draft final process. They're kind of late in this draft final process. I think on the thirteenth. They've got a a big meeting. Mayor Evans is involved and they're going to talk about this with. High level people in the Corps. And but I still think, you know, about anything's on the table as far as what could be done, you know. Other options. One of the core options, possibly some iteration of one of the core options or multiple options. Um, so with that. I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Uh, ju- just so the council knows, uh, uh, Jen and I, uh. At least Jen and I and. Colin, if he's available, uh, will be. Participating in that meeting on the thirteenth. So there are second meeting in February, uh, we'll be updating the council on. On that, on that meeting and they'll have some questions uh, uh, for me, um. And I I. Th- this can be kind of overwhelming, uh, let me look at. But the. The the numbers. But the value uh, that we've received and um, my goal is to. Is to be in a position where we. Uh, get to a place where we can actually have that model available to run our own scenarios. Uh, because that can tell us a lot, um. And then I think we're going to have uh, some other options that. We've discussed a little bit internally, but aren't ripe for. A public discussion just yet. So, uh, we're going to get some value out of this, um. And. So there'll be more to come. But. I want to thank uh, Joe and Nick for. You know, the hours and the. Complexity of this, uh, trying to distill this down. Uh, it's interesting on the. On the slide that indicates flood depths, you can tell where where our drainage. Thing is out here next to City Hall, but you look around City Hall, just for example, and um. Pretty much everything's less than a foot deep at sixteen thousand six hundred CFS. So just. You know, a part of the discussion we're going to have is. Going to require a cost benefit. Discussion. Uh, and. We can look at the high risk areas that they've identified and and. You know. We just have to have that discussion and then. Uh, at some point down the road, we discuss. What it would take to fund. Uh, whatever effort we decide to take. Uh, we're not going to internally fund this. It's going to be. LIDs or bonds or. Grants we've never heard of or. Uh, discussions with our congressional delegation on, you got any ideas and? So. The program is a specific program and the and the. Uh, people that have worked on this from the Corps, uh, have worked hard and they got great attitudes. They want to help us solve this problem. But they're constri- constrained by the. By the um. Well, the constraints that are in the program that they're. Applying the general inspection criteria. So, one thing that isn't in that is a proportionality component, so. Five mile stretch of the river. Uh, and a. Large city. Proportionally uh, for that. Budget capacity of that city is going to be different than. Five miles and it's down to thirteen thousand people, so. So all those things are. You know, we're. I'm encouraged, we're making headway, we're going in the right direction, we're getting the kind of information we need to make a. A good decision. And so. Um, but we'll be back, at least I'm not sure I'm going to, uh, probably won't drag Nick and Joe back i- in in February, but we can update you on that. On the meeting, kind of on how that discussion goes. I'm anticipating uh, questions. That I don't anticipate, so so we'll we'll kind of deal with that and. Come back and report. And then sometime this spring, we're going to have to kind of get. Have to kind of get pointed in a direction of some kind, so. We'll have more of this discussion and. And depending on. What? We hear back on our available to availability to use the model. That could guide a lot of that discussion. So. Um, and then. We're not Nick's only client either, so we'll have, we got a lot of things we got to factor into that, so. But Nick, thank you so much, uh, really appreciate this and. We'll, we'll take it from here. Yeah, go ahead.
And can I ask you? This may not be a fair question, but I was just, I can't help but think and wonder with this whole topic about. You know, water management upstream. So obviously, you know, they're taking snow depth measurements, water content measurements of the snow all winter long. Um, thinking back to of two thousand seventeen. Uh, the year that that was, I can't remember. How early they were doing releases out of all three dams to try and. Create space in those reservoirs. And to mitigate potential flooding. In the spring along the river in town. See if there's or wonder, because I have no idea with how water managers. Handle those three reservoirs, but I'm just wondering, is there anything that can be done? From that perspective to protect property down here?
I mean, uh, Mayor, Councilmember, uh, it's a good question. There's actually a set of curves that those dams are operated. By and depending upon the snow pack, they'll gauge releases. I know in twenty seventeen, we were doing a big project for uh, Viola's. Intake up by the Highway twenty one bridge. And we got ran out of the river like late January, I believe. And so they were getting out in front of it.
Okay.
And you know, they really do a a good job until it doesn't work and that, you know, the. The one I think of is is Oroville in California.
Yeah.
You know, it's it's good and it's good and it's good, but then if you get behind the curve, there's no way to make it up without opening the spillway and. I mean, a hundred year event. You know, it's a one percent chance in any given year. I don't remember how all the math works, but we, the Boise River has not experienced a hundred year event, you know, since all three dams have been up there.
Yeah.
But um, the upper river has, you know. We've seen over twenty five thousand, but yeah, they were able to mitigate it with the dams. So, yeah, it works great till it doesn't.
Okay.
It's kind of, that's what you're gambling on and. You know, what's it worth on a project cost and um, I mean, I see these numbers and there's a lot of money in this project. Um, but it kind of goes back to. Your risk in any given year is not high. But the constituents playing flood insurance and. You know, the development community trying to work around flood maps that are not correct. I mean, it's just. And you guys are not unique in that situation, but there's a lot of out there.
Yeah, Nick, if I may, so it it is interesting also to note that at least I believe that we're seeing later. Precipitation events. We're seeing more rain earlier in the water season and then it turns to snow later. Twenty seventeen was an excellent example. I mean. They tried to budget properly for the river, but as I recall, all that snow came quite late.
Okay.
And that causes a real problem with that management and we're just seeing more and more of that.
Okay, thank you.
They've also got to balance the ag needs downstream or so. Yeah, you'd think, well, just empty the reservoirs every winter and then we won't have, we've got all this capacity, but they've got other obligations. Fish and game has obligations, you know, they have to take care of that for flows and. And ag's a big part of that and there's a lot of uh, economic components uh, for recreation. So, you know, they try to. They got to balance that. We want to keep them as full as we can.
Yep.
Uh. You know, without, it's. I tell you, I did. Some of those uh, operators got to have some sleepless nights time to time.
So I believe it was ninety seven Palisades River Reservoir in the Upper State. They. Operators got behind the curve. Lot of late snow and Teton National Park and on that upper basin. And I understand they pushed about the hundred year event over that spillway for a while. They said you could hear it from miles away, you know, the roar. So I mean, it it happens, it will happen, will happen on the Boise River in the next thirty years, there's like a. Fifteen or twenty percent chance. I don't remember how the numbers work out in the next thirty years, so. And I've seen two fifty year events on projects we've done, fifty plus year. Events. On smaller base, slightly smaller basins and one event of record, it was um, closer to the five hundred. Um, on a tributary that comes out of the Willows. I've only been doing this twenty five years, so. It can happen.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Before we move off this topic, I do want to um, applaud you and thank you for staying on top of this issue. I I recall whenever. First speaking with Councilmember, you sitting me down and reviewing this information. And I did not uh. Did not take it as seriously as I do now. And certainly with the backdrop of the national events that have been occurring. I I I really step back and appreciate that you haven't let go of this and have kept it as a focus for this city. I certainly never ever would want for our city residents to cite. Sixty nine percent. Of residents having their insurance discontinued or even a component of that because. Their city failed to to plan for events like this, so thank you very much.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. We'll just. We're getting to a point where we're getting. I mean, where we can get some information because everything is so theoretical and now I think we're getting some meat. On the bone, so to speak, to. You know, okay. It's not. There's always going to be a little guesswork in this and uh, the projections, but uh. We we're going to have. This. I'm, this. Model uh, thrills me if. If we can. Utilize that model, we have a lot of things we can. Uh, a lot of options and. Kind of back into what we can do uh, as we discuss down the line, uh, funding sources. Hey. Well. That, speaking of. Jenna. Item F two is uh. Council confirmation of my appointment as Jenna Thornborough is our Development Services Director. You've been doing it for almost twenty years or how 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 many years have you actually been the director? Come on up, Jenna. This is partisan code changes we've made to uh, where we list our appointed officials and. This puts Jen in the same category as our other appointed officials. So. So how long?
Mayor, um, that's that's hard to answer, um. Because there's, there's been changes, but it was two thousand seven, um, when. I took over as the zoning administrator. I think that I'll answer that.
She was at the front window when. When uh. As I remember.
In.
So.
In two thousand five for for a very brief stint and then I started doing plan reports. And whatnot and moved by two thousand seven.
Yeah, there's. Not very many folks that have been. With me the whole time and Jen is one of those. Okay, well. We've got an oath for you.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, do you need a motion?
Oh. Sorry, Jenna. You didn't make that. Don't go away. I got ahead of myself. Anyway. Uh, Council, the item is uh, authorizing me to appoint Jenna as the Development Services Director.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I enthusiastically authorize you to appoint Jenna Thornborough as the Development Services Director.
And I would second you.
That motion is second, any discussion? Hearing another art color roll.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Dorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Esmeson?
Yes.
The item F three, um. The staff reports. Any questions? They're in the package, okay? We move down to uh, item G one. This is a public hearing. On Hossick Town Home Subdivision. And. It's SUBFY twenty twenty two dash two. Sorry, I got behind in my. Sorry, Jeff, I just had to find it on my. Uh, this is a public hearing item, uh, we will uh, hear the applicant, uh, Jeff Hatch is uh. Is gonna pr- make the presentation for us. After that, we'll get a uh, staff. Comments from uh, from Jenna. Directors Thornborough. And uh, then we'll open the public hearing and go from there, so uh. Council, anybody have any conflicts they need to declare on this application?
No.
Okay, let the record reflect, no conflicts, Jeff. Borger. That's sensitive, I see that.
Head, yeah. Jeff Hatch with Hatch Design Architecture. Her address is two hundred West Thirty Sixth Street. Garden City. Good evening, Mayor Evans and Councilmembers. Thank you for your consideration of our final plat this evening. Several months ago, we we came up with the preliminary plat and just as a refresher, this uh. Parcel is adjacent to uh, the public park on Reed Street, so you're just north of the park.
Excuse me, Jeff. Uh, Bill, can you hear him okay?
I can.
Okay, sorry, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a brief recap of the the main changes between the preliminary plat and the final plat. Feedback that we've gotten from both the general public as well as the functionality of tandem uh, parking spaces. Um, these seem to fit really well with smaller compact units, but are are. Are typically a little bit harder to navigate from a family standpoint. So the reduction of one buildable lot from from six to five allowed us to have the majority of parcels on on the property to be. Uh side by side parking situations and still maintaining uh some tanned solutions as what was previously uh approved. We feel that this is a better mesh of that variety of housing types as well, and so it it falls in line. Um with that decision as well. Uh, the connection for Heron Park was something that was brought up from design review, from planning and zoning, it was discussed here in front of the council. And we also have had several conversations with uh Jenna and coordination with that, and so in our proposed final plat. Working with the city, we have an existing. All right, let's go back. We have this existing parking lot and sidewalk for uh Heron Park. And no current public sidewalk connection for the neighborhood. It always kind of rubbed me a little wrong that that we didn't resolve that properly through the preliminary plat. And so we worked with the city and and discussions, looking at the utilities, actually getting surveyors from our civil engineer to understand. How we can navigate the sector boxes and the irrigation and and there's quite a bit of utilities in this corner that. Was uh making us resistant to doing that prior. So with that, we were able to to establish a connection that was feasible to that public right of way, physically allowing the green belt. Connection to a public sidewalk and public parking and interjecting that into the neighborhood. So with that, we did have some considerations for some additional common area space for pedestrians. Which we did incorporate a a seating space here. In our area that was uh originally the entry way into the green belt. Um still wanting to have a public component on that sidewalk uh for folks that were potentially waiting to be able to go to the park. And then uh lastly, the the central pathway that we originally had, we we did want to maintain that. And maintain the same feel for that that public entry access to the residences to still have. Have a family friendly neighborhood feel to this development. In addition to that, you'll see here keynote number three. Um for the final plat, we are proposing the location of of public arc along that sidewalk as well. So here's a uh update of the final plat lot layout. And then some of the staff comments, I think the main comment that came out was the nature of the subdivisions has changed, the key elements of the site. The pedestrian connection was removed from that green belt, which is exchanged to the south. Further along in the staff report, it says, the general configuration has not changed significantly, which we would agree. We're still proposing and working with having a a public access to the green belt. Um so over the last few months, working with staff to for the relocation of that connection. And based on feedback, the main entrance to the site. We still want to have that colored paver uh for the pedestrian pathways, we still want to engage the public with additional amenities as proposed. Adding the seating area, we're maintaining the bike racks and the bike repair station that was previously proposed. Now I'll stand for any questions.
Hey, questions? No questions. At the conclusion of the public hearing, if there's need for additional comments, you will have an opportunity to do that.
Yeah, thank you.
You bet, okay.
Mayor, members of the council, um instead of using what was in the packet, I might still uh want to adjust slides as. It shows uh some of the differences um. Tonight is a public hearing uh for this application. Um and the findings are that it would need to be, in essence. Um and they're found in the draft decision documents that the final subdivision is in substantial compliance. Uh with the preliminary plat, and again, those specific findings are laid out um in the draft decision document. Um the the one question and review of this application that uh staff had. And has worked with the applicant on is the removal. Of of this uh pathway that goes to Heron Park and eventually uh to the green belts. Um and that was a a topic. Um and that was discussed quite a bit as they went through the preliminary plat process. Um but because of where the the homes are placed and how they're laid out. Um the design review felt that uh this application. Um was not addressing Reed Street, and so this pathway was in an effort to draw the public. Um into the development and have the development address Reed Street. And so the applicant, as uh Mr. Hatch has already identified, really worked at um. Uh addressing this area and has called it a mini park. A- as a way to bring uh the public into the subdivision now, and you can't quite tell. Very well on screen. Um but instead of having an asphalt drive being the predominant feature. Um they have different, they're utilizing different color uh papers. And now in an effort to make that more plaza like and bring people in, and then um as Mr. Hatch noted. The connection to the public sidewalk that goes uh through Heron Park to the green belt is right there and they can cut. Or they can connect to that quite easily. Um, the the one thing in this uh to note. Is if this is to act as a a mini park, staff would suggest uh that uh. The applicant have some latitude to make sure that the the landscaping is appropriate. Right now, it's just conditioned that minimumly the landscaping originally um proposed in the final plat. Uh that hasn't been updated to reflect the site plan uh be placed in that area and and shifted around. Um but certainly, the applicants presumably would want that to be a usable space as well. And so perhaps they add additional trees or or whatnot, not just leave it rock mulch, uh for example. Um, there were a couple of other minor uh changes to this that are not substantial. Substantially different, um there's been a reduction in the sidewalk width from eight feet to five feet. And that landscape strip that runs in front of the sidewalk is um only six feet. And so there's another draft condition of approval, uh noting should that six feet be too small for the street trees. Um per A C H D's policies, it would need to be widened out and slightly shifted to be able to accommodate the street trees. And finally, uh staff just wanted to note. And that the arborist report that was submitted. Shows the removal of some trees that appear to be on city property and those would not be permitted. As removal without uh city council approval as part of this. Application, and with that, I stand for any questions.
Hey, questions to staff? Okay, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, sorry.
Yes, uh so with the, I'm just gonna look at the drawing here, with the final plat. Configuration, it it is intentional or not intended to um. For that now reduced to five foot wide sidewalk to run to the green belt. I mean, I see the sidewalk ends, but. I mean, is it permitted for people to walk through that area or is that constituted trespass?
And Mayor, Council President Page, it would allow uh for public access along the sidewalk in front, along Reed Street all the way and connect. Through, of course, there would have to be a slight permissions by the city for to make this connection. Uh to the city's uh sidewalk, but it would connect to the city's sidewalk that would then. Uh come back to the green belt, so there would be public access all the way from Reed Street to the green belt in this proposal.
I guess, um, thank you, but my question is is really between the buildings. So one, two, three builders down, there looks to be a breezeway, I might call it, and then two more buildings below that.
And Mayor, Council President Page, and is this the area that you're looking at?
No.
No.
Yeah.
Colin's gonna point it out.
Oh, here.
Yes, that that strip.
Um, Mayor, Council President Page, that would be replaced with landscaping. And so uh this dark checked area is a sidewalk, a private sidewalk. To the homes, and then once you reach this area, this is now a landscaped. Um buffer between the two units. I don't recall the specific plants, but it is pretty full, fully landscaped as drawn right now on the current landscaping plans.
Thank you.
Thank you, and so to answer your question specifically, that would be a trespass.
Thank you.
Hey, uh, any further questions to staff? Okay, with that, we will open the public hearing on S U B F Y twenty twenty two dash two. And uh I had one sign up, which was Mr. Hatch and he's uh. He'll have an opportunity in a minute if he needs to finish things up, is there anybody else? Uh that wishes to testify regarding this application? I can't see if we got anybody online.
At this time, Mr. Mayor, I do not see anyone raising their hand online.
Okay, there we go. Okay, uh, going, going. Hey, I don't see anybody, let the record reflect that no one was interested in testifying, uh Mr. Hatch, do you have any final comments you want to make to council?
Mayor Evans and. Mayor Evans and council members, uh thank you again for your consideration of our final plat. From Jenna's comments, as far as her consideration for landscaping and that that park space, we're we're more than happy to look at that again, make sure that. It's suitable for the general public, the condition about A C H D, we're we're comfortable with r- review and and adjustment if need be. Um and then the tree removal, we obviously have no intention of removing city trees. Uh so no, no concerns there either, I think overarching. Uh from a public safety standpoint, I think we all struggled with that that centralized access. And we feel that this is going to be a lot safer for the general public in general, eh you know, overall for for a long term. Um you know, looking just north of us, we have the the boardwalk, and if we get more dense developments in this area moving forward. A lot more congestion on the green belt, a lot more circulation in and around Reed Street, having a a dedicated. Uh sidewalk in a more traditional manner seems like it it has room for growth in the future, which I think was was the main decision for that. I'll stand for any uh final questions.
Great, thank you.
Yes, Sir Hatch, what is on the west side of this property?
The. The west side of the property would be Reed Street, is that correct? Okay, north northwest?
No, the lot adjacent. So northwest, yeah. Yeah, let's use that one. Do you know what your neighbors are?
The the adjacent residents?
Yes.
That that would be a single family residence. And then we have uh more of a mobile home park. Across the way.
So, Mr. Hatch, um. The, the purpose of the, I I think it now looks kind of like a breezeway. Uh between the buildings is. Now simply for the landscape, because the landscape will now act as a deterrent for people to. Am I interpreting this correctly?
Uh, correct, as far as for for public access to the green belt. What was previously proposed as a breezeway for access, we we're proposing as landscaping, correct?
Any any further questions? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, uh.
Sorry, one more. I apologize.
No, it's all right.
Um, Mr. Hatch, what is the, what's, what drove this change? Why, why is this coming back in front of the, the council?
A- as uh Jenna had mentioned, this is, this is a a plat that we did as a preliminary plat and then. We provided all the information for a final plat, in many cases, when a subdivision becomes before the city council. That process is merged, and in that case, if we would have done that from the get go, then then we wouldn't have have come back. Um doing it in a split manner where you have a preliminary and you have a final. That allows us to have more time to coordinate and and scrutinize the the site plan, so these changes all, although. Considered not necessarily significant, are things that are are presented to city council once more.
So you use this time to kind of work around all of the the components on the. East side of the property in the Heron Park, you indicated that there were. Power boxes or whatever.
There's a lot of utilities on that end, yes.
Okay, I understand, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. We will uh with that, we will close the public hearing on S U B F Y twenty twenty two dash two. The matter is properly before the council.
Mister Mayor.
Yes.
For S U B F Y twenty twenty two dash zero 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 two. I find substantial compliance um with the prelim- preliminary plat and um and because I find that. And I can build that up if if more is needed um. Then I uh, I'm I move to approve this uh final plat.
I would second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the final plat. Uh for Hossick Town Homes. I'm, can I make the presumption that the maker of the motion and the second are incorporating uh the items that our staff mentioned? In their presentation?
Yeah, I didn't know if you wanted to have that as a discussion item or if you want that in the motion.
Well, I just um. Mr. Hatch has indicated that he's good with those comments and. I think uh uh Ms. Thornborough mentioned. Uh on the landscape portion uh that is adjacent to Reed Street. Uh that uh she thought it would be appropriate. She's has the ability to exercise some latitude and. And how that shakes out and that's something she can do with Mr. Hatch, so I guess I was. But if I presumed improperly, let me know, but I was presuming that that part of the discussion. Uh the explanation uh about the sidewalk width. Uh which is, could be altered somewhat based on uh some interaction with the Ada County Highway District. Uh so that's, 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 that's what I, that's what I meant.
I will amend the motion to include the uh findings of that conclusion of law. Uh in approval. That the configuration between the preliminary plat and the final plat has changed less than uh ten percent. Which is the required finding, um in fact, three point five percent and that the uh. That the applicant has met the necessary conditions uh of approval.
I would second.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing now the clerk call roll.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Asmussen?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Great, thank you, council, uh thank you, Mr. Hatch, be a nice project.
Thank you.
Uh next item, G two, this is resolution one one nine six dash twenty five. This is a resolution that will benefit our library, Mr. Rodems, would you give a brief exclamation?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh I passed out a amended resolution before the meeting, uh I'm so I'm gonna ask. And request a motion to uh pass this resolution as amended, uh the resolution just had a little cleanup that I wanted to do on it. Uh, the resolution just had a little cleanup that I wanted to do on it. Uh, the topic of the resolution is the internet services for the library. Uh, I suggested and recommended this code in front of the council because it's for sixty months. Um, and so whenever it's, uh, there's a contract for services that's over a year, there needs to be a non-appropriation clause, which there is in this case. So it's, it's for sixty months. Um, but there is a non-appropriation clause. And so I'd ask that you pass the resolution. So Lindsay Pettyjohn and our public library can get their internet free. Thank you.
Okay, uh, council.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I believe internet is probably one of the most important things we, we have in our library, and I often see patrons, um, outside the bit, outside the building, uh, cuddling up to the wifi to, to get the access they need. So, uh, I definitely, um, would move for an approval of resolution number one one nine six dash two five as amended. Second then.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing now the clerk call roll.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Rasmussen?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item, uh, resolution one one nine seven dash two five, uh, dealing with, uh, surplus property. Discussed on page ninety-eight or packet. Uh, does council want to report on this item?
No.
Okay, uh, and then the matter is before the council.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I move to approve, approve resolution one one nine seven dash two five, uh, relating to surplus property.
And I would second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing now, uh, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Rasmussen?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, we'll move now to unfinished business, uh, item one. Uh, continuing our work session for, uh, C P A F Y twenty twenty-four dash four, commonly known as the buffers development code. I'm not sure the name exactly fits, but that's what we're calling it. Okay, so, it's what our audience has been anxiously awaiting. Thank you for your patience sitting through the meeting. Hopefully the flood study was in. Good, yeah, glad to hear it. So, so, uh, Jen and I have had a couple of discussions, well, discussed, anyway. I've asked Jenna to brief us, uh, on what uh, we are gonna recommend, uh, as a staff, uh, as a starting specific discussion point for the council to, to, to consider. We've kind of distilled down all the conversations we've had. There seem to be some, uh, just a very few kind of critical components, uh, that, that, uh, certainly my understanding, and hopefully Jenna's, at least at some level, are we, we would want to include it in a R three L zone if we want to create a tool to address some things. So, I'll be still now, Jenna, so I don't completely get us off track.
Um, Mayor, members of the council, um, there are relatively few changes, uh, to, to the ordinance, uh, before you tonight. Um, I'll just go through the points that were in the staff report. Um, first, there was unanimous, uh, consensus to remove the provisions regarding noise. So those have been, uh, removed. Um, and the purpose statement for the proposed R three L zoning district uh, was updated, uh, to note that it's intended for areas of medium density in the comprehensive plan. So that would negate any need to go back and, and mess with the comprehensive plan is the discussion, uh, went towards. And then the purpose statement for the R three zoning district was, um, updated to classify it as intended to be um, medium density for mixed juice activity nodes in the comprehensive plan designations. Um, and then, based on the discussions, um, the R three L nomenclature or, um, has just been replaced with an R M, so medium density residential instead of R three L. Um, the maximum height in the, um, now R M proposed, uh, potential new zoning designation uh, was set at forty-five feet. Um, there is discussions, should it be thirty-five, forty-five? What is that number? Some two-story houses are higher than, than the thirty-five. And so right now, that's set at forty-five heat, feet. Um, with a maximum density of fifteen units per acre, with an exception. And that would be within the activity nodes. There would be an allowance for a requirement to meet that minimum fourteen units per acre that's required for activity nodes, uh, but a maximum of twenty-five units per acre. I believe that those that are, um, here tonight might be interested where those activity node locations are specifically in the area south of the river west of Glenwood, and there is one at Chindon Boulevard and Garrett Street. Um, they're currently the Garrett Street Apartments right there, so there already is a little bit higher density in that area. Um, and the maximum height, uh, proposal to reinstate the forty-five feet in the R three zone has been stricken. And with that, I stand for any questions, directions, comments, et cetera.
So we're still in a work session. Uh, this is for discussion. What you just heard was, um, don't feel like it creates any kind of perceived obligation on the council at all, but, uh, we're uh, that's what we got out of the last, we got a discussion about the what medium density is, and so we we went kind of between the, the six to the acre and the thirty-five and, uh, so, anyway, uh, we'll ask you, what do you think? Uh, Wendy, if you have any comments, you're welcome to come up and join us. This is a work session at, atmosphere and, uh, our intent was to kind of capture where we thought this was going, and, uh, if we make a decision, I think the primary ones are on height, uh, density, and the name or M, as opposed to getting too many other numbers in there. Uh, then the procedure would be to convey agreement or any changes you'd like to see incorporated, uh, and then I think we're about at the point where we get this to Mr. Waddams to put it in ordinance form. As, uh, as I indicated before, to implement our new procedure on ordinances.
And, Mr. Mayor, just a point of order, I've brought it up, uh, several times in the past, but, uh, to come up with a new zoning designation, like is kind of the proposal right now. There needs to be a legitimate reason for treating that potential zone designation different than the other zones. So, what is the legitimate government reason to do this?
Uh, compliance with the comprehensive plan, defining undefined terms in our code, like medium density. And, uh, an interest from our from public testimony, uh, be more harmonious with the existing development and that may surround any particular piece of property that's, that this zone could be applied to at a future date.
Sounds good to me. Thank you.
So, what do you think, guys? Come on up. Maybe come up to the
Mr. Mayor, Bill does have some confidence.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me jump, let me give Bill, and then I'll, Bill, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand. Go ahead.
Okay, um, I just had a quick question. Obviously, it's on, on, um, on height restrictions. I like, I like the work that you did, Jenna. Thank you very much. Um, it might, I just want to clarify, so the R three, we struck the forty-five feet, so is that then complete unrestricted height under that zone, under R three?
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember Jacobs, at this point in time, yes, it would be, and that would be the same as it is currently in code.
And can, and just very briefly, um, cause at one time it was forty-five in R three, and then I think at that time, council, um, eliminated it. What was, what was just the thought process around that? You know, why make it unrestricted versus a hundred feet or what, a- any other, you know, measure? I was just, I don't recall or, or know what the thought process of was with eliminating that height restriction, so it would be unrestricted. Just curious, a brief history.
I have my perception, and, and that was to accommodate, uh, proposed development, uh, between the Riverside Hotel and, uh, Fairgrounds.
On the Fairgrounds, okay.
Between, between the Riverside Hotel and the Fairgrounds.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm having a little bit of a hard time hearing, so.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I'm mumbling. My wife keeps telling me that. I gotta, I think when you start losing your hearing, you start mumbling. I don't know. Maybe there, maybe there's a connection.
I'm doing both.
But that's, that's what I recall, uh, and of course, we have, uh, uh, four or five-story, single-family dwellings in R three zones down there. I don't know if that's R three or, yeah, right there.
Yeah, I was just curious of why it went, went to no limits versus, let's say, a hundred fifty feet, whatever, right? And I was just curious of the history of it.
So I would argue it, it was in response to, to a specific demand that was raised and had support from, uh, a number of, uh, folks that live on, in that general area. And the purpose of having the R M now is, at least in, from my perspective, is to be able to respond to the have an opportunity, should the council choose to do some rezoning in the future, have an opportunity to respond to the uh, requests from folks in other areas of town that may be in a different circumstance than, than the east end.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. Um, thank you. I just wasn't, I just couldn't remember that history. Thank you.
You bet.
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I think I, I probably just have more clarifying questions to make sure I, I understand. So this is really going to be applied to what is currently, um, identified is medium density within the comprehensive plan. Is that the intention?
So Mayor, council, and members of the council, I'm too used to public hearings where I took a minute to realize that I could answer that. Uh, but yes, uh, right now, it's been re-designated based on the, the conversation that instead of, uh, being designated for low-density areas, it's stated as being appropriate to be utilized in medium-density residential areas.
Um, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Jenna. Um, so I think as, as a general rule, and obviously without ha- uh, having a lot of time to talk with many of my neighbors, I think that this is definitely moving in, in a positive direction. I think the, um, the decision of, of fifteen units is seemingly a reasonable, um, division between the six units at R two and the thirty-five units at R three. Fifteen seems to be a reasonable compromise. Um, I, obviously, I can see that from, from the point of view in terms of everything that, um, you know, as I've thought that through, but again, I, you know, I would leave that to some of my individual neighbors who may potentially have a few different ideas, because I think certainly some wanted it to go back to what it was, which was the ten units. Um, but I think we know that this is all about a compromise game, and, and, um, so certainly it seems like, uh, we're moving in a reasonable direction. Um, and we're appreciative of that. Um, the other question, I think, in terms of just questioning, I think some of the other things in terms of buffering type of language, if it's a multi-family development adjacent to single-family, are you envisioning that that would all, um, all those changes that you had put in the last draft, did the buffers back in the fall? Are those remaining?
Mayor and members of the council, the language, um, talking about buffering would remain. Um, and so there's, for example, the transition, anywhere that would be adjacent to the R two or the R three zoning districts, uh, would have that tran- um, that transition, uh, area language that we discussed. Um, the perimeter landscaping, um, et cetera, would all apply. Um, and hopefully that answers the question.
So, thank you again, Mr. Mayor and Jenna. Um, so, the one thing that I have, haven't really had the chance to, to talk about, I think particularly, um, with Mr. Waddams asking the question in terms of, you know, what would be the legitimate, um, purpose of this? I think that the council should obviously feel very good about this, um, and moving in the direction, and I think the public desire. Um, the one thing that I've been in possession of, some petitions with about a hundred and seventy-one signatures, um, from various neighborhoods. Um, the Willowbrook Neighborhood, the, um, Westminster Neighborhood, the Rivers Edge Neighborhood, um, the River, River Point Neighborhood. So, and, and I would tell you, those were signatures that were gathered with very little effort. Um, I can tell you, if I really got warmed up and going, I can probably guarantee we would have a lot more to be able to ensure that there's the, the public interest. But really, I've been just trying to balance this with a very busy life and trying to share information as best I can. As we know, we're not necessarily overflowing here today. Um, I intentionally kind of let people know this was not an all-hands-on-deck type of opportunity that I was willing to carry, um, um, the water for them, but I certainly know that they will be present for the public hearings and, and sharing their enthusiasm, and, and perhaps maybe some questions and concerns, because, um, as I know that sometimes these things, some people have differing opinions about what's the right thing, and again, I think we're just moving in the right direction when it comes to compromise.
Great, thank you. And I, I feel, uh, forgive me for being redundant, but I want to make sure that we, uh, every time we have this discussion, we uh, make it clear that, uh, this is a, this would be a new zoning designation that would be an option uh, at a future time, if it was chosen to actually apply to a specific parcel. It's not the only one. So, there may be, and I'm putting a big question mark around that, there may be parcels that are currently zoned R three that might more appropriately be zoned R two and not R M. I don't know that. That'd be a, uh, it'd be a decision for the council to make at a future time if, if that was, if that was the case. So, uh, forgive me for this constant disclaimer every time we discuss it, but, um, i- if the council proceeds with this and we end up with an R M zone, then that, that can be applied at some point, uh, with these, these criteria that we discussed, so, of I'd like to hear from Wendy again. Wendy, are you here?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. So, I think that those are the big questions that we have hanging over our head is we understand that really what you're proposing is to create the, the vehicle to allow an actual zoning change. I think we're all understanding enough that it doesn't really affect real change unless the actual properties do get rezoned. Um, certainly, from an optional standpoint, a lot of people probably aren't going to necessarily say, well, I just want to volunteer to do that. Um, but I think that it really would take, um, uh, action to, to actually start moving forward on that zoning change. Um, and that would be something that we would hope could begin pretty quickly, and I guess my question would be once we, if we can get this vehicle, uh, approved and created, what's the next step to be able to keep moving forward when it comes to the actual zoning change?
Okay, so, uh, you're pushing me into a theoretical area here, but I'll, this isn't a congressional hearing, so I'll venture into that a little bit. So if the council, uh, gives the nod, uh, Mr. Waddams, uh, this would go to him and, and this would go to him and, and go on his queue, and uh, then that would trigger a three reading process. Uh, so that would be three council meetings, so that's that's six weeks from the time it's first presented to the council. And after that, um, um, the I'm anticipating we would likely have another series of work sessions to discuss whether or not that tool or another one in our toolbox is appropriate for more specific piece, properties, pieces of property. And, um, I'm, I'm comfortable that we can have that kind of a discussion once we have the RM tool in place, because I think it's gonna, personally, personal opinion, mayor doesn't make these decisions, city council does. Um, I think there's areas that would be appropriate to apply the RM, or possibly there might be areas where we apply the R two, which, which is a further density reduction, so, um, so I can tell you, once, once RM is on the books, uh, I'll sk- I'll, I'll schedule uh, another work session, and we may have a little town hall on it, I don't know, I'll think about that. Just have a we can have may have, uh, some discussion with property owners, I mean, I'm I'm just adamant that we get this in place and get past this, and then uh, I can have a substantive, we can have a substantive, uh, staff could have a substantive discussion with uh, potential areas where we might want to make a change, and certainly contact those that would be affected by that. Meaning the property owners.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, council, what do you think about the suggestions?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'll start. I, um, I just really want to thank staff, uh, this undertaking is massive. I think it's, it is a a mandate from our constituents, uh, so I, I feel like this is something that I would be proud to post on Facebook, and I don't always feel that way, um, about the decisions that we've, we've made based on how we've been required to uh, comply with people's property rights, and so another tool in the, uh, in the, uh, tool, in the toolbox is, I think, a solution. I'm, uh, happy to see forty-five, uh, feet versus thirty-five feet, and I think that the fifteen units per acre is, uh, a nice compromise as well. So I, uh, I'm very pleased. Thank you, staff. Um, I would echo, um, the appreciation to staff, um, on the work that's been, that's gone into this, um. I, uh, the suggestions from feedback, uh, at our last meeting, um, I think I are really good, I think, um, at the last work session, I mentioned something about not thinking we needed another tool in the toolbox, um, but the way this is shaken out, I think it fits well relative to the alignment of the comprehensive plan. So, um, I've, I've kind of changed my tune on that, so I, I, I think the RM is appropriate. Um, the other thing, I think I said, and I, I actually made a mistake, uh, uh, at the last work session was I, I was getting ahead of myself and thought, oh, well, I don't really want a height limit, or I do, I was okay with a height limit in R three, but then I thought later that, um, a height limit east of Glenwood in R three was something I did not want, so that kind of overruled my o- original statement on that at the last work session, so I like there not being a height limit in R three, but then assigning one to RM um, is, makes sense, though, because that does help that tool, give that tool more value, if you will. Um, or another option with different variables, so, um, so in short, um, I think the, uh, the new recommendations, the changes, um, to what we originally talked about are, are good, and I'm supportive, and again, thank you, staff, for, for those. And Wendy, your input as well.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, is, what, what's in the, uh, packet? Uh, potentially the final language?
What's in the packet, uh, contains the intent of what the final language, which there may be some nuances there, that's why, uh, uh, if the council we kind of get a head nod, we're not really, we're kind of making a decision in a way, but I mean, the real decision comes when Mr. Waddams presents, uh, a draft ordinance for us to look at, so if there's, if there's any little pieces of this that that, uh, you have some concerns about or don't understand, then, uh, we'd, we'd want to express those to, to Charlie. Now or the next week or so.
Mr. Mayor, it's been, um, brought to my attention. I believe, um, there's some inconsistency on page one eighteen, and I, and I realize this hasn't been to Charlie's office yet. I'm sorry, Mr. Waddams' office yet, but I think we were talking about thirty, uh, forty-five feet rather than thirty-five feet in item number four. Is that right, Teresa?
Yeah, I, I, um,
Yeah.
Uh, are, are you on page one eighteen?
Oh, one eighteen, no, I'm on page one forty-five.
Item four?
Yeah, that would be forty-five. That's the suggestion that we had.
Mine, I'm thinking, I'm seeing the same thing you're seeing.
Yeah, this, again, this is a draft document.
Okay, so the thirty-five would be replaced.
Thirty-five would be forty-five, yeah.
Gotcha.
So I'm interpreting the silence.
Were, were there any other comments from the public?
No, I think they, most of them have left.
Okay.
And we will have the public hearing on this issue at the next council meeting on the tenth of February.
Yeah, if, that's subject to, to Mr. Waddams having an opportunity to get this in ordinance form by then.
But it has been noticed, like it has been noticed for the next meeting.
Correct, we continued it in the consent agenda to the tenth, if it needs to be continued again.
So if you're not ready, we'll have to continue again. If you are ready, fine, okay? Yeah, yeah, yes.
Mr. Mayor, if you believe it is going to be continued again, if we could just have maybe a little bit of a heads up before the next council meeting?
We will, we'll know, we'll know the, no later than the Friday before the Monday. Probably the Thursday before the next council meeting. I, I gotta be careful about obligating Charlie because he's got stacks of stuff, so, uh, so if he can work this in, great, if he can't, then it'll, we'll let you know.
Okay, because we, we will start putting the word out about it being at what is currently proposed, and I will let I will let everyone know that that's tentative, but
Yeah.
if as long, if we can know, obviously, if Mr. Waddams is feeling like that's a, 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 going to be a, a difficult deadline to meet, maybe that that can, I, you would obviously have to take action at the next council meeting
Yeah.
to once again continue it.
Right.
But if, if real, if realistically you have a sense that that's the direction it's going to go, if we could know, that would be helpful.
Oh, certainly.
Mr. Carver, Herbert, I will, I will be in contact with you via email as I go along in this process, so you know where I'm at.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, I just am hesitant to create an obligation on him. So I don't know everything he's giving, okay? Um, are we, are we good to move on, council? Okay. That concludes the business on our agenda tonight, and entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn tonight's meeting.
I would second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, we stand adjourned. We'll look forward to seeing you back here, Bill.
See y'all, I'll see you in two weeks.